Welcome to the earlier city council meeting Tuesday, July 7th, 6:00 P. M. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosas.
President.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah.
Councilmember DeSaldy.
President.
Mayor Julian.
Here. Please stand with me and. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is a moment of silence, thanks appreciation of condolences and electoral with the condolences to the family of Elizabeth Garcia Leiva who passed last Tuesday. To last Tuesday. Anybody else on the condolences?
Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I want to just take a moment. Um, this is something that's been impacting our community, I think especially given our town and the close knit nature. Um, obviously things like this really um hit you hard, you feel a sense of um community and loss for this family. There's also um wonderful outreach and outpouring for this family in terms of um donations and and support uh in their community. And so I wanted to just mention that uh next Friday, there will be a benefit barbecue at Kermit McKendy's food, um starting at four P. M. There are no pre-sell tickets, it's a walk-up and it's ten dollars a plate and those money will be given directly to the families. Um, there's some special challenges with this particular case um in terms of travel and there are two young children involved who will be starting school in the fall. Um, so if anyone can and would like to support them, that is a really great way to support that. And that is also being co-sponsored by the Cubanist of what we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, agenda review, there are council members that wish to change the order of the meeting as written. You good? Next item, uh community participation, uh there's, there's forms right there request to speak or an item that's not on the agenda. I have two so far and the first person is Seth. Uh, no, I'm, go ahead, you're, you're number two, but I'll give you number one.
Okay.
Second, second, please sit.
First of these.
Thank you.
On perfect.
Um, so the item I want to address is there's been a rash of towings that have been occurring in our community. Um, I understand that it's supposed to be a crackdown on uh regi- on expired registrations. However, we are seeing mistakes being made, we are seeing cars that are being towed illegally. Uh, they are being towed despite being current on their tags, case in point, um my niece's boyfriend was parked in front of it, was parked at uh in the Pasadena homes, uh his registration is current. And we brought a current registration to the police office, to the police office, they continue to finance, we still had to pay, so we're out five hundred dollars because the police made a mistake. Now, the mistake he made was he wrote down most of the information for another vehicle. And then he, and then he wrote down the license plate of uh of this car. And so when the towing company came out, they took the car. This was apparently according to a sergeant I spoke with, actually noticed by another one, and so they corrected the form by putting in his information without looking at the vehicle at all. So mistakes are being made, people are being towed, and on top of that, just the sheer volume of the cars being towed is actually causing a lot of anxiety. Um, I have multiple friends who are afraid to park on the street despite being current on their registrations because they're afraid their car's gonna be towed, they're gonna be out five hundred dollars. And based on my experience, we are being unapologetic about it, we are still charging people even if they are being towed illegally. So I don't know what's causing it, why, why this is happening, but I really would like us to read down that, look what we can do so we can help this community feel a little bit safer, be feel safe just parking at their own homes. Because that's what's happening right now, people are scared to park at their own homes. For fear of being out, five hundred dollars plus, he lost the shift. And I'm sure he wouldn't be the only one who if their, if their car got towed loses money working on top of the extra five hundred you're gonna be charged between the police fees and the towing fees. So I hope that we can look at that, change that because it is really hitting the community. We have a Facebook group for our Pasadena homes. People are scared. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Uh, the next person uh is Marshall.
Yeah. Hey, guys, uh same topic here, uh I am a resident of the Pasadena community. Um, I don't suppose it's possible to get any kind of a little quick briefing on what's happening or why? Do any officials here know what's going on or why it's going on?
Good. Sure, there's three minutes for.
I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Two things uh I, I definitely want to address to the council and and to um community members here, um we mostly respond off of complaints. Uh, I believe it was about four months ago, um we attended a community meeting uh in the Pasadena community and most of the people there, say about uh twenty or thirty people that that were there, the uh the city administrator was there, our human resources person was there. That was one of the biggest complaints of the people that were in that community complaining about uh vehicles parking, trailers parking, seventy-two hour violations and so forth. Okay, so we went out, we started canvassing the community, um one of the things that came up, there's a um a citizen who lives in the area, she would drive a bicycle and point out uh vehicles that were in violation and watched, especially with me, uh to see what we're gonna do. And so we started to, to uh ticket vehicles and because that was the complaints that we had received. We have a list um of all the vehicles that we have been towing. If you look on our list, which is if anyone ever wants to come to the office, uh we talked to numerous people that have vehicles towed and um the whole thing is that we're working with them, some could not afford it. We work with them because they came to the office and they were able to explain. Ninety-five percent of the toes are for registration violation. That's a California vehicle code, that's not a Guadalupe code, okay, that's something that has to do with that. Trailers, um if you look now on the streets and uh we got accolades from, from residents in the Pasadena area, streets are a lot cleaner, uh less trailers that were parked, people were parking trailers for a week. Motorhomes have now been moved to the uh to the driveways as it should be. We've gotten rid of um vehicles that have been sitting there for way too long and trailers that were eyesores. So this is something that has been on the books since uh two thousand eight. But people started complaining and they wanted something done. And if you come by, you look at our numbers, I have some here, anyone wants to stay afterwards, we'd be more than glad to show you. Um, it's been throughout the entire community of Guadalupe as far as the vehicle enforcement. So if this is nothing new, this is nothing selective. These are uh violations on the books and in our seventy-two hour violations, there's a notice that's put on the vehicle, people complained about the orange sticker, um I hope you've heard about those. Um, that gives people notice, so it's, it's, so we went out with education. We went to community meetings to talk to people and unfortunately, a lot of the people that did not show up at meetings, did not communicate with us, they were in that situation where they end up being towed. So if anybody wants to talk about the specific issue, I'll be more than glad to. The one, I believe the gentleman spoke earlier, uh you and I never talked about this, I don't think you've ever come to my office to 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 speak on this one. Oh, I'm Monday through Friday, you know, Friday's my day off. Um, no, it's, it's closed right now, um nine to five, we, we there. So if anyone wants to discuss it, so we don't take up time here from city council, stop by my office, please make an appointment and we'll discuss every single issue that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the time.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything else?
Am I permitted to speak or have I yielded my time?
You will, you will be your time. But you heard Chief, if you have something that's specific about, we can't do anything about it.
I understand.
So if there's a, if you have an issue specifically with you, please uh.
Certainly, and people can go to the office and obtain a report for me, correct?
I appreciate it.
Correct, yes, very well. All right, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak?
I will not make a visit with you to my office.
Call please.
No, I'm, I'm going to visit, I was.
You can.
We'll talk later after.
Give me your card. Okay, the next item, consent calendar, uh the following items are presented as a blanket uh approval without discussion. Is there a, a council member that wishes to pull an item for specific discussion? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm wishing to approve the consent calendar.
You're second? In discussion. I'll listen to David, what you say.
Bye.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is city administrative support and information only.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and Public, uh tonight you, under consent calendar, you approved a, an agreement with the Dwayne Chisholm from Chisholm uh Utility Management, who will um now act as an interim public works slash city engineer. He's here tonight and if you have any questions of him, I thought maybe I'd have him come up and say hello.
Yeah, have him come up and say hello.
Thank you, uh, as, as indicated, my name's Dwayne Chisholm, I've been in the public works business for more years than I want to count. And uh by the way, I got my start as the public works director right here in Bonneville, Beesaw, uh lady. I spent, spent several years here, so I have a familiarity of the community. Um, you know, when you have a small town like this, you know, it kind of takes more than an hour, you can ride it six times and figure out what's going on, so. And uh, you know, the interesting thing is, is that you've gone through a career as long as mine, you always develop stories about things that you tell your colleagues and your, and your people and I got three or four great Guadalupe stories, I always uh use to talk about things that occurred here, so it's, it's great to be back and look forward to helping you out for a short period of time.
A bit of senior record.
We're very grateful to have you, thank you so much.
And Dwayne will start the week, the seventeen.
Seventeen. Yeah.
Thank you so much, thanks for coming tonight, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, um, the uh, I want to make a, there is a mistake uh mentioned regarding the library rent, I want to make sure that the, the city knows, and I think you all got emails, that the rent for the library is two thousand, not twenty-two hundred. So I wanted to make sure that the public knows there's a correction to loopy. Um, also, um we haven't, we're, we're, we're dealing with the budget tonight, but we will later, and I know we talked about the state of the city being in July, and I think maybe it'd be best to sort of push it to August or September, something like that, so that's all I have, that's the end of my report.
Thank you for mentioning, and I know that the, all the first ones that we receive via email or written goes into our meds, so they're all, they're all accounted for, so.
Okay.
All right, uh, the next item, uh, a public hearing review and approval of draft housing element for review by housing and community development uh HCD and adopting resolution twenty-three to sixty-one. No, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
He's, he's, he's all.
Okay, we'll come back to him. Larry, you're on.
He is.
I'm, I'm unmuted, so I just want to make sure you can hear me before I start. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers.
This evening, Dr. New Orso, I will present the draft twenty-twenty-three, twenty-three one housing element for a public hearing.
Larry, Larry, let me, oh, one second.
Larry was working, but now it's.
We could hear you at the beginning and then once you started, you kind of muffled out a little bit.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay, you were muted yourself, so. Okay, can I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna hold this slide while I make my presentation until the doctor comes on. Okay. Shortly after the twenty forty-two general plan was adopted in November last year, staff turned their attention to preparation of the sixth cycle housing element. The previous fifth cycle housing element was adopted in twenty nineteen, several years after its due date. That's why it seems like we're preparing an update too soon at this point. Dr. New Orsu was contacted, it was contracted to prepare this document for us. And some of you might not know, but he and a team from Cal Poly prepared the last housing element for the city. A public workshop was held on January tenth this year uh to obtain comments from the general public as well as local agencies with interest in housing issues. The workshop was well attended and Dr. New Orsu was able to incorporate the comments and concerns into the draft document. The administrative draft was edited by staff and then the public. He made for thirty-day review. A follow-up workshop was held on June twenty-second and now we, we are before your council to make final presentation before you hopefully direct us to forward the document to HCD for their mandatory review. At this time, Dr. New Orsu will summarize the document with the PowerPoint presentation, I believe you have a, a printed copy with you, so that should help. I should mention that Dr. New Orsu is on vacation in Ghana, Africa, so we are crossing our fingers that the connection won't cut out. By the way, um, it's now past one A. M. over there, so he gets to go to bed when this presentation is over. Once he has completed the presentation, we will take questions and then see if there are any public comments. Public comment period, uh, uh, once it closes this evening, staff has two recommendations. First, to direct staff to transmit the document to HCD for their ninety-day review along with the resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-one. And then to direct the consultant to prayer, to prepare an appropriate environmental document. The next steps after that, that would be to receive comments from HCD to complete the environmental review and then return to council uh for final adoption. We'll now have the presentation by Dr. New Orsu.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. I'm going to stop my video to respond with. So hopefully I can get through to the end. Uh, if in any event, uh I lose connection, the network is kind of sketchy sometimes, then I will continue on from what I left off.
You lost, my video lost, yeah.
No, he, he intentionally said he was gonna end his video. But he wanted to keep his audio to make sure he had enough bandwidth.
Oh, it takes up energy.
Yeah, he's trying, he said the internet was sketchy. But now we can. He know we can.
I don't know. Can you hear us?
Yeah, our audio's on.
Okay, so we are now on slide number two. Um, I'm going to spend much of the presentation looking into what the previous housing element accomplished and the opportunities for meeting the requirements for the new housing element. Then we will summarize how the cities actions on housing foster fair housing and introduce the environmental document to be prepared for the new housing element. Finally, we'll uh, I, I might go over the next steps, I think Larry has already uh outlined those, so I'll skip the next steps and then we can open the floor for public feedback. Number three. California government code mandates that cities develop housing elements as part of their general plans. The code requires that the element identify and analyze both existing and projected housing need and articulate statements of the goals, policies and objectives and programs for the preservation, improvement and development of housing. In adopting its housing elements, a city must consider economic, environmental and fiscal factors as well as community goals as set for in the general plan. Number four. The project we are discussing today as introduced is the sixth cycle. The twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one Guadalupe housing element. Sixth cycle simply means this is the sixth round of uh doing this, you know, statewide according to the HCD schedule. The proposed housing element is available to the general public, it was available for a month uh and a half now almost, and electronic copies are also accessible through the city's website. If you, you can get a hard copy, uh sorry, you can see a hard copy at City Hall. This environmental documentation is going to be what is called an initial study based on the program EIR, which uh, which was actually a mitigated negative declaration, just a, a certain flavor of the environmental documentation for the twenty forty-two Guadalupe general plan. Slide number five, now let's review the project's consistency with other elements of the general plan as the law requires. The city of Guadalupe's new twenty forty-two general plan covers thirteen key topics which affect various aspects of life. These include the original mandated elements on land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise and safety. The plan also includes environmental justice and air quality elements which are again mandated by Senate Bill uh one hundred for disadvantaged communities. And for further depth, the plan has four optional elements which include economic development, public services and facilities, community design and health. State law requires that all parties, portions of the general plan be internally consistent. Now, however, the housing element has several statutory requirements, that is why we have this special focus and special documentation for it. So slide number seven, a quick illustration of how general plan topics relate to housing. Let's take land use for instance. Is the element that examines what to put where? Or it reflects the community's vision on where you want to put different activities. These land uses include residential neighborhoods, commercial establishments such as stores and restaurants, industrial areas, agricultural areas and open spaces such as parks. Another element, the circulation element coordinates directly with the land use and involves strategies to focus on access or connectivity to different land uses or destinations. So the circulation element envisions how you get to where you want to go, say from home. Housing is a primary form of shelter in the city. It addresses current housing need of its residents and ensures that we make provisions for future housing needs. Slide number eight. Consistency. This housing element builds upon the other elements and is consistent with the policies in the general plan. For example, the housing element incorporates residential development capacities established in the land use element and discussion of infrastructure and public services based upon information from the land use and public facilities elements. As the housing element is updated through time, it should remain, remain. As the housing element is updated through time, it should remain, remain in internal consistency. With the general plan. Slide number nine. Now, and, okay, so I will skip this part, which is a recap of public participation. Um, I will only skip the dates, but maybe let me, let me just skim over it. During the general plan process, cities and counties must provide opportunities to involve residents. In a community planning process to ensure that policies reflect the aspirations of the community. So, in, 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 in total, this housing element is a product of. Broad community participation for community workshops in October twenty seventeen, November twenty seventeen. Uh, March twenty eighteen, and again, March twenty eighteen. All as part of the broader general plan development process. Then, after that, we had two hearings held jointly with council meeting. In October twenty eighteen and May twenty nineteen. And then for the specific, this specific effort, the sixth cycle element. We've had two additional meetings, one six months ago. Uh, in, uh, on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. And another on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and today is the third on July eleven. The following few slides summarize the results of the community outreach we conducted in January twenty twenty-three. So, on issues with housing, we asked, uh, uh, participants. The three top priorities, uh, the, their general issues with housing. And the three top priorities in order of importance are the cost, number one. Uh, sorry, cost and affordability, number one. Homelessness, number two, and options or choice in housing. As number three. Notably, homelessness has become an issue of grave concern among residents, which wasn't so in previous meetings. The other new issues mentioned concern. Subletting in the new Pasadera development leading to crowding and shortage of parking as well as. Lack of trash receptacles and maintenance at the new parks in the new developments. This chart lists the key developments and how many participants mentioned them in the survey. We asked about the priorities for general housing types. As the chart shows, single-family units and duplexes jump ahead to first and second places respectively. Followed closely by small apartment complexes. So, the interpretation of this is that the aspirations for units. Uh, to, for them to be large and at the same time for units to be affordable. When we ask specifically on affordable housing types, not just all types of housing, but affordable options. Apartments and other multifamily units jump ahead of accessory dwelling units. Mobile homes remain a distant third. Then we asked about special needs housing. Respondents continue to recognize and express the importance of all forms of special needs housing. Topping the list are farm worker and senior housing in first and second place respectively. Single-parent housing is in a not-too-distant third place. And running off the list are housing to suit those with disability and recent migrants. Finally, respondents were asked about which part of town housing. We should focus the development of housing. Development of future new housing should go to, according to the survey responses. Should go to new, uh, uh, neighborhoods designated in the general plan development. Process as future growth areas. With little difference in the number of respondents, the priorities are the northeast residential area. East of Mary Bearin Elementary School called the Gulate Track. The downtown mixed-use corridor and surrounding residential neighborhood. And the DJ Fund Specific Plan Area now popularly known as Pasadera. So now, let's review the outgoing housing element. The fifth cycle, which ran from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. State housing element law assigns the responsibility for preparing the regional housing needs assessment. Commonly nicknamed RENA. To California councils and associations of government. The San Barbara County Association of Government is responsible for the San, San Barbara County region. Which undertakes the RENA process prior to each housing element cycle. For the previous fifth cycle, I'm now on slide number seventeen. For the previous fifth cycle, SB卡 allocated fifty housing units in the city of Guadalupe. Broken down into five income groups labeled extremely low, very low. Low, moderate, and above moderate. Uh, as shown in the charts. The green bars, the very short, sorry, blue bars. Are the allocations, how many housing units, uh, Guadalupe is supposed to, uh, pro-produce. In by income category. And the orange, the very, the long orange bars show how much Guadalupe produced. It shows that Guadalupe has met and exceeded its housing allocation. For the fifth cycle now ending in all categories. And if you are wondering how the, uh, extreme, very low, and so on are defined, this chart shows it. Extremely, so we begin with the median income of the region. So in the San Barbara County region, let's say, um, if the median income is. Say eighty thousand dollars, then, and the median means that. The household incomes are arranged from the lowest to the highest. And then the, the value that is the middle value in the range. So, uh, households ending thirty, thirty percent and below. Are considered extremely low. And those between thirty-one and nine, and fifty percent are considered very low. And so on and so forth, as you see on the chart. Next slide. Number eighteen. This table has additional details of the city of Guadalupe's compliance with the current. Twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-three housing need allocation. Not only did Guadalupe fully meet its allocation for the fifth cycle. They see that exceeded it substantially in some of the income categories. When you look at the second column from the right. You know, those in purple, the moderate and above moderate were like twelve times. Where that Guadalupe produced twelve times what, uh, you were allocated, uh, by RENA, by the county. And, and did not, you know, lag in, in any of the other categories. How did this happen? Success happened? The Pasadera development helped achieve twelve times the RENA allocation for moderate. And above moderate categories. Uh, the, the, the commonly previously called DJ Fund Specific Plan Area. It broke down in twenty fifteen, built and sold a hundred and thirty new housing units by January twenty nineteen. By the end of twenty twenty-two, it completed three hundred and sixty-three dwelling units. Out of a total authorization of seven hundred and forty dwelling units. All these data according to the Guadalupe Building Department. Leading a difference of three hundred and seventy-seven units to be constructed during the new cycle. The new sixth cycle that is coming up. There's, there's, when it comes to the lower income categories. The city fulfilled the housing need in the low, uh, in those category with people self-help. Construction of thirty-seven assisted housing apartments. And the construction of a few ADUs, which stand for accessory dwelling units. Or secondary units or in-law units. The Escalante Meadows Development, which had fifty-two units. Is also going to replace those fifty-two units with now eighty units of modern attractive units. For the lower income categories. Now, a look at the new housing element, slide number twenty-one. The current regional housing need allocation. Is for the sixth housing element cycle and covers the period of eight and a half years. From June thirty, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-one. Consistent with state law, Guadalupe's sixth cycle housing element plans to accommodate the city's. Fair share of housing in the five required affordability groups. This chart here, slide number twenty-two. Shows that for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-three housing cycle. San Barbara County, County Association of Governments assigned four hundred and thirty-one units to Guadalupe. Across the five income categories. Labelled as extremely low, very low, low moderate, and above moderate. Now, you can see in twenty twenty, for instance, the median income of San Barbara County was eighty-four thousand, eight forty-six. So let's call it eighty-five thousand. So for reference, households ending less than sixty-eight thousand would, uh, dollars a year would. Fall in the lower income categories. And at the very bottom, those ending less than twenty-six thousand dollars a year. Will fall into the extremely low income categories. And of course, the chart also shows that the, uh, that Guadalupe's success. In delivering, delivering housing, uh, the county has recognized it and decides to. Uh, allocate even more in the moderate and above moderate categories. To serve the regional need, not so much the city itself. So the table here, again, bit, you know, from which the charts, the previous slide was extracted. Shows that if the excess of three hundred and fifty-four housing units completed. In the fifth cycle were counted toward Guadalupe's allocation for the sixth cycle. Plus, the three hundred and twenty-four other units. Anticipated to be completed mostly in the Pasadera developments over the period. Then Guadalupe is poised to deliver six hundred and seventy-eight total housing units. Uh, or take credit for six hundred and seventy-eight total housing units, uh, in the sixth cycle. This exceeds the sixth cycle allocation of four hundred and thirty-one units by more than fifty percent. Indications therefore are that Guadalupe is poised to meet its new RENA allocation. Under this sixth cycle. Slide number twenty-four. The general plan, so here we see the general plan map. Which proposes a mixture of low-density, medium-density, and high-density housing. Low-density is in the light yellow color, medium-density a little bit, uh, darker, yellow. And the higher density, a little bit darker, are shown in the legend and on the map. By focusing development of these different housing types in several key areas of the city of, of Guadalupe. The city can maintain its small town feel while still allowing for growth. Proposals are to concentrate future residential development, again, under this sixth housing element. And consistent with the general plan land use map in the. Obispo Street Neighborhood within Guadalupe's boundaries, east of Obispo Streets. And south of Fourth Street. The second location downtown mixed-use corridor and surrounding residential neighborhood to the north. Then, the third, the northeast residential area, known as the Gulate Track. And number four, development of the DJ Fund Specific Plan Area. Or the famous, attractive, and well, highly desirable Pasadera. Development. So, in summary, implementation of the programs in the housing element. Will provide sufficient housing sites to accommodate the city's fair share of housing. In various affordability brackets, especially in the infill sites of downtown. As well as mixed-use and assessing dwelling unit size where infrastructure is readily available. Implementation will increase development densities in the target areas. And support the use of non-motorized alternative modes of transport. It will also enhance availability of affordable housing. Especially with programs to expedite processing of development applications in the target areas. For instance, the consolidation of adjacent parcels to create unified development sites. Would occur under a simple administrative review process that is concurrent with application review. Affirmatively fair housing. This is a new addition to the housing elements. Effective January one, twenty twenty-one, government code requires housing elements. To include an assessment of fair housing. And that assessment discusses four thematic areas. Integration of people versus segregation of people in the community. Racial and ethnic concentrations. And whether those foster poverty or not. Disparities in the access to opportunity because of where people live. And disproportionate housing need within the jurisdiction, including the risk of displacement. So here is the assessment. Now, there are no development proposals in the twenty forty-two general plan and this housing element. That will cause disproportionate housing needs within the jurisdiction. That will cause disproportionate housing needs within the jurisdiction. Or creates the risk of displacing segments of the population. However, the city has been typically, uh, uh, this is because the city has been typically below the recommended. Uh, vacancy rate of five percent, yes, that however was in place. So even though there isn't a clear. Case of incidents of displacement. The fact that the housing market has been tight and your vacancy rate has been consistently below five percent. Indicates that people residents have limited choice. And their ability to move around in housing to suit their changing circumstances. And the danger is this could make. Uh, residents susceptible to displacement risk, which low vacancy risk could trigger. But that is not the case, it's just that there's a possibility. While such risk may be greater for households in the lower income segments from price competition. The city has steadily steadfastly kept the production of lower income housing. At car with each allocations over the previous two cycles. And the incidence of homelessness is relatively low in the city. So the analysis overall points to a favorable assessment of fair housing in Guadalupe. Slide, slide number twenty-nine, environmental documentation for the new housing element. This is the next major task in the process. Consistent with the technical advice from the California Office of Planning and Research. The secret documentation for the housing element will be based on the EIR of the general plan. Which was a certain type or called the mitigative negative declaration. The purpose is to assess whether policies and programs of the sixth cycle, this new cycle. Housing elements are consistent with the general plan programs and actions. And whether the housing element contains new proposals which will result in any significant effects. That were not examined in the DAP plan's EIR. Thank you for your attention. Uh, Larry already recounted the next steps to you, so I will not repeat those. And I would, uh. Turn it over back to Larry and the, uh, and the city folks. To moderate their question and comment section. Thank you very much.
Why don't we see if there are any questions for the professor at this point, um, from the council before we open up the public hearing?
Good idea. Any comments? I think it's a very well-prepared document.
Yes, thank you so much for bringing that show.
Doctor, doctor and, uh, very, uh, thank you for putting that together and nothing from the council in terms of questions about staff?
Nothing, that looks good.
So at the six fifty, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the, on the presentation or housing element? No hands, paper. So it's six fifty-one, opposing public hearings, and it's back to the council for action. So the recommendations are on our, on our agenda on page three, three, uh, three or five. Review and approval of the draft housing element for review by housing and community development HCD. That's one element and then adopt, adopt, adopting a resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one. So in order of what, what we talked about, receiving presentation, uh, from staff and from staff and consultant, conducted public hearing, which we did. Direct staff, direct staff to transmit the draft housing element to housing and community development for the required ninety-day review. And then direct consultant to prepare an appropriate draft environmental document to address any impacts created by the adopting, adopting of the draft housing element. So there's two elements, one is to approve the draft housing element for submission to HCD and then to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one.
Are we making two separate motions? Or is it one?
One continuous.
This is one. Oh, there we go. Mr. Mayor, the resolution includes all. The, uh, housing element is approved. Uh, the staff is directed transmitted, that's second one of the resolution to all territories to adopt the resolution.
Is there motion of the, the document, number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one?
I motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Prosta Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosales?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Julian?
Aye, all ayes. Thank you, doctor, and thank you, Larry, for your.
Yeah, just before we leave this item, um, question for, uh, council. Um, number four on the recommendations, I don't believe we had direction to, uh, commence the environmental review as part of the resolution. So could that be taken up as a separate motion?
Sorry. Um, yeah, sorry, Larry, about that. I was gonna say, I, I, do you think a motion is required for that or can they just provide direction to you to do that based on the approval of the document?
Well, if, yeah, if we have direction, that's, that's fine. I just didn't hear that.
Yes, no, it wasn't, it wasn't part of the motion, but, um. Staff, is there a direction to, uh, prepare the environmental documents?
We are concerned, so you want motion?
Well, motion would be better.
Is there motion to, uh, have direct, direct, uh, staff, uh, driving, driving back in the.
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussions?
All those are paid with motions, aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Are we covered, Larry?
We're good. Thank you very much. Um, the doctor can go to bed and I'll go back to vacation.
Thank you, Dr. Larry. Same here. Self-travel.
You are. Thank you all very much and greetings from Ghana one more time.
Yeah.
Good night.
Send pictures. Yeah.
Okay, I will.
Yeah, they're all members to have materials prepared so well.
Yeah, this is, this is really a critical area.
We got, we got this line out.
It's really a testament.
Okay, while you were gone, chief.
Yes, sir.
You're not going to go away, Director of Public Safety, can you hear information only?
Okay.
You got our attention. Um, let me try to be succinct as possible. Um. All the information came out as far as the homicide, um, that had occurred with, uh, one of our residents. Um, our department initiated the, uh, missing persons report. And I want to give accolades to, uh, all the officers who brought them all in, uh, and the whole team worked on this. Uh, the information that they had put into the system allowed San Diego Police Department to quickly identify, uh, the, the person and, and what had happened. Um, so we work hand in hand with the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department, San Diego Police Department and our department. And, uh, the accolades were when San Diego, uh, they called and they were coming up to work. Um, from all the work that we had sent them, they says, if they could meet with our homicide unit. To, uh, work with them. So we want to tell them, yeah, that's, um. Yeah, that's, that's everybody. So, uh, that was a nice real compliment that we got, but, um, all, all the information that is there, what you said. Um, and, um, through direction of some of our council people and community members, um. That's one thing that we're extremely proud about. We saw that in the flood, everyone came out, same thing is occurring right now with the family. Um, we've been working with the family, so we get, we're getting family assistance, victim witness assistance from Santa Barbara. And victim witnesses from San Diego. Um, and we're also helping with the family so that, uh, some of the family members are on the other side of the border so that they can come here. Um, we've, we've worked with some of the agencies so that we can secure those, those kind of things and, uh, making sure that we try to transition. I appreciate it, um, some of the council members here who have stepped in because they've got kids, uh, parts getting them back into school and some of those special needs. So, um, there's a lot of stuff that's occurring behind the scenes, a lot of people don't really know. Um, when you have this, this type of, uh, situation. So I, I really want to reach out and say thank you to everyone, even ones I didn't see. Um, that have stepped up quietly to kind of, uh, help from just food to comfort and, and everything else. So that's a, a real proud aspect of Guadalupe. Uh, just a little shout out to, um, um. Louis Navarro, um, he's, uh, one of our veterans, I believe, is he about ninety-five? Because you're so. Yeah, he's in the nineties. He's, he's in the nineties. Um, Louis is at, at home right now in hospice. Um, I went, I saw him in the hospital. Um, that's one thing that makes you really love this town is, uh, we all stay kind of connected. So, you know, there's no real boundaries. Um, and I've got a text from his family. Um, he's not talking right now, uh, but, but he is home, so I'm going to try and make a, a visit as soon as I possibly can. Um, from direction from the council, we're working on the, this trailer ordinance, uh, we had a, uh. Public testimony in our last one, uh, about business trailers and so forth. So, so I'm talking with some of our community members and we have a, a, a young lady in the back, you raise your hand. Um, she has some of those same issues, so I'll be speaking with her after this. Um, to talk about how we can work on, um, be able to bring some suggestions to council, um, concerning the ordinance. Um, and we just got to work with the family and they'll be, uh, the ones that spoke earlier, they'll come to my office tomorrow and. Um, everyone really understood what was going on when we kind of read everything, so. Um, but that's the part that we're all going to be working on these, these different things and, and, uh, they did acknowledge like everyone else. It's tough, but everyone really sees the positives that come out of getting some of this stuff off the streets, especially with a lot of our new AUDs. There is less parking. And so we're, we're moving things along and they even admitted the streets do look cleaner, wider and so forth. So there's some growing pains, but I do appreciate the direction that was given from the council. And, um, and, and letting them know this is a, uh, a citywide thing. It's not just one person and we're not targeting anybody and I let them know that I report to the city council and, and I keep my, my partner here, uh, Todd. Our city administrator, uh, abreast and, and we even send a staff to fill. Uh, we're always afraid of getting sued, so we just make sure we keep him in the loop of things. Um, got, uh. Emails from citizens asking about the Fourth of July fireworks. Um, we had seven cases. That the officers made, uh, citations on, um, so, um, seemed like everyone kind of saved them up for the fifth instead of the fourth. Um, that had occurred there, but so, um, we'll be pushing those, uh, forward, dealing with our city attorney to see how we're going to handle those. Um, and the last one that's, uh, good one, I got a call today. Um, I appreciate our finance and the council for the, uh, the vote for the, um, the generator. Um, that was on the consent agenda for accepting the, the donation and also, um. Allowing us to go and purchase it. Um, we have a gentleman from Santa Barbara. Um, he's electrician and he called and he's volunteering all his time and resources to be able to, to put in the generator as soon as we get it. So that's going to save us an awful lot. So, um, uh, they called me, uh, about two hours before I came here and we're working out the details right now. So, uh, uh, we'll, we'll be getting the information and that cost savings, thank God. Um, with that, um, unless there's any other questions, I mean, that's my report.
Questions first?
I just wanted to say something. And I was already gonna mention this publicly, I just wanted to acknowledge. And thank our public safety department because we are running on limited resources. We have had some extremely unique situations as documented in the media and I know you gave us our update for our community. And so I think everyone's stretched thin. And so, you know, the fact that. You know, we're hearing in the community how this family is being supported, how, you know, our police officers are still continuing day-to-day business, given those circumstances. Um, I just really wanted to publicly say that and say thank you for just maintaining that safety in the community. I know it's, I know we're running thin right now. Um, but the fact that those situations have been handled and handled well, um, I just think needs to be publicly said. So thank you and please relay that to your staff as well.
I will. Thank you so much, man.
Deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, we'll go to, uh, item ten, the completion of closeout of CDGD. Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year FY twenty seventeen grant project. Leroy Park and Community Center and Citywide Community Resil- Resilience. Tiffany Gonzalez. Hey, Tiffany.
No.
No.
Think we're good, maybe? Aye.
There you go. Enjoy.
It is, it's a good lay.
Good evening, Tiffany Gonzalez, uh, Community Development Director for Los Amigos de Guadalupe. Uh, here, uh, for the recommendation that city council hold a public hearing. Seeking, uh, seeking community input on the completion of our CDBD grant for short. Uh, for fiscal year twenty seventeen, it's two parts. Uh, Leroy Park and Community Center and then the City of Guadalupe Community Resilience Plan. Uh, this is part of the closeout process before we actually do the closeout of the grant. I just wanna, um, focus on a little bit of the discussion and then, uh, the accomplishments of our, uh, twenty seventeen grants. Uh, one thing to highlight, the pandemic definitely slowed down, um, that project. As noted earlier in the report, um, I'm not going to add too much more from the reports, again, just to highlight. Um, even though the pandemic slowed Leroy Park down, it did get finished. And there are other things that did kind of put Leroy Park, um. Struggling in completion and putting the sealed bid process. And then also one thing to note, we did go through the process already of adopting and approving the resilience plan. However, uh, we failed to also provide a public notice that that was actually going to happen back in April. And so that's why we're here addressing it one more time. Accomplishments, and this is what I really want to highlight. Phase one of Leroy Park was completed May of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have the ribbon cutting ceremony, which was in June, that following month. Uh, this was an event sponsored in park by the Central Coast, um, Sun, sorry, Central Coast Community Energy. And the Knights of Columbus who helped provide a delicious, um, community barbecue. Um, that helped celebrate that long-awaited milestone. It's awesome to see the park and the Boys and Girls Club back up and running, our youth, all the residents are taking advantage of the facility. We still also, uh, get inquiries on cost, uh, to rent it out and, you know. Pass that back over to Ms. Hannah, but it does show the engagement and the staff, uh, the residents happy to be able to use our park again. Um, in May of twenty twenty-two, uh, the City of Guadalupe was awarded one point seven million dollars. From the United States Department of Agricultural World Development. Under the Community Facility Program to complete phase two of the community of Leroy Park and Community Center. A total of seven thousand eighty residents are expected to benefit from the completion of our, um, phase one of Leroy Park and our Community Resilience Plan. This project was funded for a total of five point four million dollars. Uh, roughly five million was for the renovation of Leroy Park. Uh, eighty-seven thousand three hundred forty-five for that community resilience plan. Uh, two hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred twenty-eight was for the administration of the grant. Uh, altogether ninety-nine point seven percent of the funds were expended and we are just encumbering point three percent, which is thirteen thousand five hundred ten. Uh, we do expect to see, um, Leroy Park help generate some revenue for our city, much needed with the rental fees, um, included with that. And then the opportunities to generate funds out of the resilience plan. And that will conclude my little presentation.
Okay, uh, any questions from the council?
No.
If not at seven, at seven oh six?
Yeah.
Open up to the public, uh, for any additional comments regarding the closeout of the plan. You know, closed, somebody would say something, no? Yeah. Seven oh seven, we'll close it, public hearing, bring it back to the council for action. So we're asked to, that's the recommendation that, uh, that we have, we held a public hearing. So we're asked to, that's the recommendation that that we have, we held the public here. Um let's see.
The resolution.
Yeah, we'll look at the resolution, the dub resolution. Uh twenty twenty three dash sixteen.
And. And there's.
Twenty twenty three dash sixty three.
Can you do that?
Did there are motion to that back?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to the or. The top resolution number twenty twenty three dash six two. And twenty twenty three dash sixty three.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Well, so much progress.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, thinking about where it started to where it's at and now we're closing that contract, which is awesome. Don't make me.
Phase two.
We'll call please.
Council member Costa Junior.
Hi.
Council member Lobos.
Hi.
Council member Hernandez.
Hi.
Council member Vazaldi.
Hi.
Mary Julian.
Hi, all nice. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if that's true, yes, but. Hello, how you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh members of council. Have a. I wasn't sure if I um. I should start or Janice maybe?
Regular business is a fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two audit of financial statement, single audit, single audit, single audit. Report and then twenty twenty two agreed, agreed upon procedures. Uh you're on, sir.
All right, well, let me share my screen real quick.
But before before you do that, Janice, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just gonna read the second part, but you did. You did it so well.
Okay, all right.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, you're good, sir.
All right, thank you. Me, all right, so I think you should be seeing uh my presentation uh screen, hopefully. And um. So I'll get started. So uh we've completed the audit for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. And in terms of my presentation, I'll be going over the engagement team, the deliverables and scope of our audit, the areas of primary emphasis. Uh the auditor's report and just a few slides on the financial statements. And we'll conclude by going over the required communications, new accounting standards. And uh if there's any questions or discussion matters, I'm happy to 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 discuss at that point. In terms of the engagement team, so uh this year I was the engagement partner uh due to California audit rotation requirements. Um we are required to rotate uh partners every six years. So I was uh the engagement partner this year and Mr. Badawi was the control, quality control reviewer. Uh quality control reviewer is not necessarily someone who's part of the engagement team, but someone who reviews the report and reviews our working papers as an independent reviewer and provides uh some, I guess, quality in terms of whether we followed firm policies and auditing standards and if he has any kind of uh comments. And um in terms of the senior was in charge of the audit was Samuel Michelle. She's also a C P A and we had two uh staff auditors um assisting her. The deliverables and scope of the audit, so we've issued our report on the financial statements. Uh we've also issued a report on internal controls over financial reporting, compliance and other matters. Uh the city uh did require a a single audit, which is the audit of um financial statements in combination with uh audit of federal awards, issued a report separately in a single audit report. Um that should be included in the packet. Uh we also do a agreed upon procedure report on the uh appropriations limit or GAN limit. And we've also issued a a letter, referred to as S A S one fourteen letter, communication with those charged with governance, which essentially is just a a letter that will have the uh required communications that we'll be going over later in the presentation. Um areas of primary audit, this is so our audit is performed on a risk based approach, meaning that we don't uh put equal weight into all of your uh account line items that are in your financial statements. We identify risks and address those risks uh by uh planning different auditing procedures as we plan, as we consider necessity. Uh these are just uh significant risks that we've identified as part of the audit and nothing necessarily uh specific uh to the city exactly. These are risks that exist in 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 all entities uh really. So the first being uh revenues and receivables uh in regards to revenue recognition. Uh revenues are a significant line item in your financial statements. Uh stakeholders like to look at revenues when assessing your ability to make payments and uh profitability for your enterprise of funds. And uh so we do confirm a lot of your revenues with third parties. We review your enterprise funds, revenues, compare those to uh non-financial um criteria, just to look for any anomalies and investigate. Um and make sure that nothing is, I guess, uh unexplained there. Uh pension and other post employment benefits, which are your retiree healthcare benefits. Uh consider that as a complex area. Uh it requires uh some understanding of of those numbers, how to record the journal entries. And um we have to also obtain uh information from Calpers. Uh so we do additional audit procedures here. And um I think my camera. That's. Sorry, I think I'm just in the suns. Right, um and then management override of internal controls. Is the standard risk management put in place internal controls? Um which means that if they so choose, they may decide not to follow those internal controls. We address that risk by looking at uh accounts that are susceptible to management override of internal controls. So those would be your estimates and um internal controls may be overridden by recording of journal entries. We do review those journal entries to make sure that they're supported and appropriately approved. And anytime we identify any unusual business uh transactions, which may be not uh consistent with the city's operations, we look at those transactions uh closer. We didn't really identify any uh such transactions as part of the audit, but if we did, we would uh kind of obtain additional information and verify uh council action on those. Uh in terms of auditors' reports, so this is our opinion and what we've um. I guess issued um as part of our audit. Uh so we've performed the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Uh in addition to that, we've also done the audit in accordance with governmental uh auditing standards and the uniform guidance. Uh government auditing standards and the uniform guidance provide supplemental audit requirements when you have a single audit. Um we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean audit opinion. Uh which that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Your accounting policies have been consistently applied. Uh your estimates are reasonable and the disclosures that uh follow the financial statements, we believe are are complete and accurate. Looking at some financial slides, uh these slides just relate to the government wide financial statements, which are your consolidated uh statements, so to speak, so they look at the city as a whole. Uh this is just looking at the um your assets and deferred outflows of resources. And uh in terms of trends here, you can see that your cash investments uh were were a bit higher this year due to positive um. Operating results and also the uh the ARPA funds that the city received. Uh there was an increase in your capital assets this year that's mainly attributable to your Leroy Park um project that uh we believe was phase one completed during uh twenty twenty two. Other than that, there were no other significant uh trends. Uh looking at your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, um you can see there are some uh significant swings on on this slide. And um in the accounts payable and accrued expenses, those are mainly timing related and also some payables related to uh C I P activities that were just um outstanding as of the end of the year and paid uh in July or August. Uh you'll see that you did have a significant decrease in your net pension liability uh this year. Uh the net pension liability that the city reports is a share of uh the Calpers Cost Sharing Plan, which is multiple employers participating. And um another, I guess, a unique item with this net pension liability number is that it actually lags by one year. So even though this number is reported in your twenty twenty two financial statements, it actually reflects the number as of twenty twenty one. Um this is due to some requirements of having to have audited information from Calpers. So there are, it is permitted to report a a number that is one year older. Um and in fiscal year twenty twenty one, Calpers experienced a large um investment gain uh higher than projected. So in terms of looking at all of their plans, uh they had significant decrease in the total net pension liability. And since you report a proportionate share of that total, your share of that net pension liability also significantly decreased. You can see that there is also a related increase in your deferred inflows of resources. Uh and you can, that is because uh when you have uh changes in the net pension liability that are due to uh investment earnings, uh those uh changes are not permitted to be reflected immediately in your income statement, so they are initially deferred and amortized into uh expense uh over a five year period. Uh you'll see next year that actually your net pension liability will go up again. And that's because in twenty twenty two, Calpers experienced about uh maybe maybe a five or or ten percent investment loss. In addition to that, Calpers will be uh using a uh lower discount rate in measuring your net pension liability. So in combination, you should probably see that the net pension liability will go back up. Uh so this is a a liability very susceptible to um changes and assumption changes. So it's um in the future, in in the following slides, I'll I'll go over uh the net pension liability uh just a bit closer. But that's that's the reasoning for the changes in your liabilities this year. Um on slide number nine, uh this is um looking at uh certain information from your statement of activities, which is presented on page eleven. And it's comparing your net cost of service uh for your governmental activities. So those would be your uh city council, city manager, finance, human resources, police. Um activities that are essentially funded by uh tax tax revenues. So we're just comparing that net cost, which takes the total cost less any revenues that those activities are funded by or generate like your citations and and such. And then comparing that net cost to your tax revenues. And you'll see that for twenty twenty and you did have uh your tax revenues slightly higher than uh your net cost of service. And then you can see for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, uh your net cost of service significantly decreased. And uh unfortunately, this comparison is slightly misleading uh because when you receive capital grants, so for example, I believe the city did receive uh federal funding for or grant funding for your Leroy Park um C I P project. That those expenditures in your statement of activities, those expenditures are capitalized. So they are not actually sitting in your expenses. They are capitalized and will be depreciated over the life of that uh capital asset. Uh however, those capital grant revenues are recorded as revenues. So you see that it actually you have revenues there, but there's no, the related expenditure is not reflected on the statement of activity. So that creates your net cost of service to go down. Um in the future, because you'll be recognizing depreciation expense for those capital projects, it's gonna swing the opposite way. So it's um when you have significant capital funded grants, um you're gonna see this type of activity, so it's not something that you can necessarily look at. Um I guess um on a one year to one year basis, it's something that you probably need to look at on an average out uh for a period of of years. But um in terms of your tax revenues, uh which is why I kept the slide, is that you can see that there has been a positive trend in your uh tax revenues. And I believe your net cost of service has been about the same if you exclude those capital grant revenues. And you'll probably, you'll see that on this, on page ten, I believe, that you'll see a column on the statement of activities for your uh capital grants and contributions. And you'll see that they were probably uh much higher in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two as compared to twenty twenty. On slide number ten here, we're looking at your, the general fund solely. And uh this is an analysis um which we refer to as the expenditure coverage. And we're looking at your unrestricted fund balance over the past three years and comparing that to your annual expenditures. And then um kind of um coming up with the ratio or calculation of in how much number of months are you able to fund uh of uh with that uh fund balance? Uh the G F O A, which stands for the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend to have this ratio or calculation to be two to four months. And um the city has been kind of in uh having a decrease here. And um which is why we do have um a going concern uh paragraph in our auditor's report, which is when we believe that the city is in a situation where and it's it's a bit of a challenging situation with the a city because you know, cities don't necessarily get into a liquidation state like a private company. However, we do, it is an indication of when we feel that the financial condition of the fund may not, may need some action. Uh so we do include that in our in our report. And um and see that this year, the general fund did, um you did have some higher expenditures. Uh and also uh the revenues were higher in addition to to transfers. So your fund balance did go down this year and um we we have that going concern paragraph in our report. And um. Into the next slide. Uh this is looking at the city's annual pension contributions over the past three years. Uh this is a number or a requirement from Calpers into how much the city needs to fund uh into the pension plan. And um and if some clients had some interesting questions, because if you had, Calpers had a large investment gain in uh twenty twenty one, you know, why are why are the contribution requirements still going up? Why haven't they decreased? Um then the the reasoning is is two, there are two uh explanations for the for that. And firstly, it takes some time for um them to take into account those gains and losses, because there's a timing difference of when they do their actual studies with the most updated information. And then secondly, there is a smoothing of those gains and losses. So you don't have dramatic uh ups and downs when they determine uh your contribution requirements. So when there are large gains or large uh losses, those are uh I guess amortized or uh kind of uh smoothly introduced into your uh contribution requirements over, I believe, a twenty year amortization period. So you would probably see that uh in the future, that they may, the contribution would maybe slightly go down or I guess net, there would be, I guess, yes, but maybe a leveling off. But then again, it would go back up when there was a loss. On slide number twelve here, uh this is um what's referred to as a sensitivity uh disclosure, which is on, included in the notes to your financial statements. Uh which if you go to the pension disclosures, there'll be a table referred to as the sensitivity disclosure. And this is just going through your net pension liability and doing a what if scenario, had the discount rate been one percent lower or one percent higher. And you'd see that um. You know, had the discount rate that the city, that Calpers used been one percent lower, you'd have a much higher uh net pension liability reported. And had they used the discount rate that was higher, you would have a much lower net pension liability. That was higher, you would have a much lower net pension liability. And. Um, one way to look at it is that if CalPERS had a. Expected uh, investment return that was lower. They would expect employers in the pool or in the plan to. To contribute more, to be able to make those uh, benefit payments. Uh, which would require, that which, which means a higher liability on the city's books. If CalPERS had a uh, investment return that was expected to be higher. Uh, based on their portfolio, then the demand on, on employees would be less. Uh, not, it's not necessarily trying to say that one number is more accurate than the other. It's just to provide a range. Uh, for any planning purpose, purposes and providing perspective on what that number could be and how volatile it really is. Um. Uh, similarly here, there is a this, the sensitive disclosure for your uh, retiree health plan, or if it was the O P E B. Uh, liability. And uh, you can see here similarly, um, you know, a slight increase or a slight decrease. Uh, not as dramatic as the net pension liability. And the reason for that is because. Um, when you're talking about one payment for one retiree is much lower than um. You know, an annual uh, pension for one retiree in terms of dollars. So when you, when the actuary. Discounts them to uh, uh, the current period. It's, it's um, it doesn't have that dramatic effect as, as with pension. Uh, in addition to the discount rate uh, for your retiree healthcare plan. There is also a uh, sensitivity to healthcare uh, trend rate. And this is the actuary's assumption as to how uh, quickly healthcare costs will increase in the future. Um, so when, if the actuary estimated that healthcare costs would increase. Uh, more dramatically, you would end up with a higher liability. If they believed that it would be one percent lower. Uh, you would have the smaller liability. Again, it's not necessarily saying one number is more accurate than the other. It's just to. To give you some insight on the range of what that number could be. And going over some required communications, um. So these are just our responsibilities and management's responsibilities as far as the financial statements are concerned. And also for the, the audit. Uh, it becomes a bit uh, blurry when uh, we assist management in preparing the financial statements. Uh, really, our document within that um. Package of information is just our auditor's reports. So anything with our letterhead is, is our document. The financial statements, the note disclosures, the supplementary information. Uh, management discussion analysis, which is included, are all of management's responsibilities. So to clarify, our responsibilities are to audit the financial statements. And we issue an opinion on those financial statements. Part of our work will in, include. Evaluating internal controls or financial reporting, looking at compliance with laws and grants that we believe are material. To the financial statements, reviewing the financial statements and communicating the audit results as we are doing today. Uh, management are responsible for the financial statements, putting in place internal controls. Providing us with information to perform the audit. Uh, in establishing internal controls or fraud, informing us if there was any instances of fraud. Uh, complying with those laws and regulations. And when we have audit findings, to take corrective action on those. Uh. Our responsibility also includes independence, uh, which is why you have us as a third party. Uh, performing the audit versus having someone within your organization. You know, kind of going to finance and doing their own review of the, the numbers. And that's because you're looking for, um, or everyone is looking for an opinion that's free of bias. So our responsibilities are to protect that. And um, we do that by complying with the rules that are set by the uh, A I C P A. And also the state board. Uh, those rules would include not participating as management, not making decisions. Um, you know, anytime we have some kind of relationships or um, with those involved in the organization, those would. We would exclude members of our firm from performing the audit procedures. And it's a, a long list. Um, in terms of uh, services, we haven't provided any services that would impair our independence. We do assist in um. Preparing the financial statements, which we can perform if we have certain safeguards in place, such as management. Uh, reviewing the financial statements and accepting responsibility for those financial statements. Uh, the timing of the audit uh, was delayed, uh, in part, mainly because we did have some. Uh, or not we, but the city did have some uh, turnover this year. And in terms of completing the audit and completing the single audit, which is the audit of the federal grants. Uh, that took some time to resolve. Uh, in terms of new accounting policies, um, these are the listing of the new uh, accounting. Uh, standards that were implemented during the year, also referred to as. G A S B uh, statements. G A S B stands for Government Accounting Standards Board. Um, the most significant was uh, leases. Um, so I, I don't think it's worth talking about all the others, but leases changed how um, uh. How e- everyone, I guess, in, in the government reports, um, lease liabilities in the past. You would make an assessment whether lease is an operating lease or a capital lease. And uh, if it met an operating lease, you would record it by expensing it. Uh, capital leases required capitalization and recording of a liability. Uh, they've essentially standardized the, the lease accounting. So you don't have to make a differentiation of what's capital lease and operating lease. Um, we look at it in, in both ways. So if the city is lessor. Um, you would account for a receivable and a deferred inflow. If the city was a less C, you would recognize a capital asset or a intangible asset and a lease liability. Um, in terms of estimates, I mentioned pension and, and all the post-employment benefits liabilities are significant estimates. Other significant estimates. Are the useful lives of your capital assets, allowance for uncollectible accounts. And accrued compensation, which are your compensated absences, which have some. Uh, judgments in there, uh, in terms of whether people will take leave or cash out leave. Um. They are a number of disclosures, um. That follow the financial statements. Um, this is just a listing that of, of disclosure that we believe are most important. Uh, disclosures provide you with additional information about the, the numbers. Um, so you're looking at cash and investments. It, it just gives you a number, however you go to the note disclosure, it will tell you what is the city's investment policy. You know, what investments the city had. If you look at capital assets, it would show you what were the acquisitions during the year, what was the depreciation expense. What is the composition of the capital assets? Uh, employee retirements, would they have your benefit plans, your actual assumptions that went into the numbers? And also another significant item was their going concerns that provides you with information about. The going concern and what are management's plans of uh, addressing that and improving on the condition of the general fund. And uh, and also the successor agency, uh, private purpose trust disclosure is, is significant. Uh, we had no difficulties in performing the audit. Other than just the timing, but other than that, we were able to complete the audit. In terms of significant adjustments, um. Management has recorded uh, all of our post-proposed audit adjustments. The most significant. Entries were to just correct revenue recognition of, I believe, the ARPA funds, which. Um, you're not, uh. According with the accounting standards, you're not permitted to recognize all of the revenues immediately. You have to recognize the revenues. As you expend them. And I believe we had an adjustment for that. And um, we had some adjustments for the inter-fund transactions. Um, other than that, nothing else to report on this slide. Mentioned we had no disagreements with management in terms of um, accounting or uh, audit adjustments. Uh, in terms of um, findings or deficiencies in internal controls, we do have material weakness regarding the going concern. And we have significant deficiencies relating to journal entries, um. Journal entries, these are described in the single audit report, just if you're looking for them. Uh, we do have um, criterias, uh, conditions of what happened. Recommendations, cause, and then also. Uh, management's responses, which are not audited, are included in, in the single audit report. Uh, but general entries just refers to that not all journal entries were independently reviewed, deposits payable, um. Uh, we would recommend that this be reconciled. Um, at the end of the year, uh, currently they were not very material deposits, but. Um, they are just a risky area. Uh, closing procedures just relating to having a formal. Uh, closing procedure to make sure that all, um. All required entries are recorded. And also when you have instances of. Turnover in management or those responsible for managing the books. Um, it becomes difficult for the successor accountant to know what are all the entries that are needed. So having a formal. Uh, closing checklist, it ensures that the new person who's coming in knows what to do and take over rather than having to try to research. Um, and find out what's, what's going on. And also having um, maybe written policies and procedures over grants. Uh, that's just relating to, um, you know, knowing, having formal, how to apply for grants. Who is responsible for complying with the grants, having an inventory of the grants, billing. Of grants and such, having that more maybe standardized uh, through, and also again, having something written assists. Uh, successor employees in having something to, to look at, to what needs to be done when they, when they can take, take charge. Um, as part of the audit, we've obtained, uh, we obtained a representation letter from management. That's them accepting responsibility for the financial statements, acknowledging to us that whatever they provided for the audit was. Accurate and complete. And also letting us, uh, in short, in simple, just letting us. Know that there's nothing else that we need to be aware of before we sign our report and issue the financial statements. Now, we're not aware of any consultations with any other accountants that management may have made. Uh, other than the, the letters mentioned, there were no other material uh, communications. And then the going concern matter is, is uh, on note fifteen, uh, if you wanted to read. More about the matter regarding the general fund. Uh, we're not become aware of any instances of fraud or illegal acts as part of the audit. On slide number twenty-three, here it's just the listing of the new accounting standards that we're working with management on. With, in twenty twenty-three and then not much, I guess, at the moment, um, for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And. In terms of twenty twenty-three, nothing, I believe that would be significant. The most significant that everyone is looking at at the moment is G A S B statement. Ninety-six, which deals with any cloud, uh, subscription-based or cloud-based I T arrangements. Essentially, they would be treated similarly to leases where if you have a large uh, long-term commitment. Uh, to make payments on these I T arrangements. You're essentially required to report a liability for that commitment because you've signed a contract. And you'll be making those, those payments uh, for even five or more years. Um, obviously, we'll look at materiality as part of evaluating whether we believe uh, any entries are needed. Um, by the city, if there are any significant subscription-based I T arrangements, we have body cameras or. Things of that nature that may, may require you to, to look at it in, in closer detail. And I think that's it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you have questions later, my email address is, is also here.
All right. Thank you. Uh, from my counsel, any questions? Pretty detailed, uh, in general. Then of course, the document itself is very detailed. At least about you.
Yeah, I don't have any comments about it. Um, well, you know, actually I do. The going concerns that we'll address. And I think we need to, um, to really look at, um. The, the reserves that he was really talking about, um, and that was part of, um, uh. The, the budget where I showed you what the current, current, um, budget and how the auditors want or. How the recommendation is to before months of expenditures, um, in order to serve. So that's. The whole, one of the main things that are on the going concerns.
And a lot of the policies, uh, creating policies that we've been, you know, standardized. So that's, that's a big one. And also staffing. That we're gonna deal with later on in terms of double checking.
Yes, um, so with Tyler, um, there's some controls that I can currently put in place as far as, um, me being the approver. Um, on some journal entries, um. But again, it's, it's right now to work in progress because I need, um. Have to segregate through these. And um, that's kind of a. Um, kind of segue into what, um, what, what type of we're talking about tonight. Uh, but yeah, tho- those are concerns of, uh, that, that, that I'm already, um, have. Prepared, uh, for wanting to get procedures on the books and, and getting, getting those things approved.
Okay, actually, we need any action here, we. Just, uh.
To accept it.
Just accept the report, um. Let's do a, well, we'll have a motion to that, to accept the report as provided by, uh, the firm. The motion to drill the report.
A motion to create the single audit report, some, uh, presented today.
Well, second then. Any discussion? All of the, there's a motion to say, ah.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I like that I came in.
Yeah, I just think, uh. Bye, I love you.
I'm.
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 The city council.
That's what.
Right, from uh New John description. Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, community. It brought to staff's attention that our community is still growingly frustrated with not being able to pay for bills in person during the week in City Hall. Feedback received for hours on when finance window should be open is Monday through Friday from nine thirty AM to five thirty PM. This is a shift of currently the hours, Monday through Thursday from eight thirty AM to four PM. Staff is requesting recruitment for a part-time, not benefit-eligible finance clerk position. That would be working no more than nineteen plus hours per week. This position mirrors the previously approved finance clerk position that is benefit-eligible. Uh from City Council back in October of twenty twenty-two and was approved for a uh thirty an hour, thirty an hour a week position. Three dollars, sorry, thirty hours a week position. Uh since February, when the city successfully hired the benefit-eligible finance clerk role. Our community demands for having our fin- finance window available for processing payments were still underestimated. Our newest finance department employee graciously made themselves available to help out more with the ever-increasing workload. And those ten extra hours of regular time uh pay has now evolved into a full-time forty-hour-a-week position. Staff will be preparing a request to council on the twenty-fifth for your official approval to update the part-time thirty-hours-a-week benefit-eligible position to a full-time position. Back to the currently proposed uh proposed uh staff report. This new part-time position is supported for two reasons by human resources and staff. In order to meet the community demand for City Council consideration. The first reason is that recruiting for this added position, it would negatively impact labor costs. This could be argued uh that it's an added position that would eliminate higher overtime rates from our current active staff. To fill the hours needed from our community, community to be to be available. Second reason is mitigation of present and potentially future staffing disruptions. Current staffing and employee availability for an additional part-time clerk. Give staffing advantages to cross-train and also additional backup uh within the finance department departments for personal emergencies that may arise. One minor correction I need to mention is under the fiscal impact portion of the staff report. This proposed posi- position would be working up to a limit of no more than twenty hours a week to remain non-benefit-eligible. So staff will be technically not scheduling anything more than nineteen hours a week. Staff and I are available for your questions. Questions?
Yeah, you answered my one question, which was we had two full-time right now with one part-time, but the person's part-time working kind of full-time? Is that what you said? They're working more than the initial amount that they agreed to come on.
Are we including our hourly staff supervisor?
I'm going off of what you have here for clerks only.
Yeah, we do have uh uh three clerks, two of them being an account clerk, and now we just in October twenty-two with City Council approval. Got a finance clerk available for uh taking care of uh extra work and keeping the finance window open.
Mm-hmm. But you mentioned they were initially part-time, but sounds like maybe working more hours?
It's it's turned out to be, and I don't know, I need to get assistance from uh the 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 real actuaries of when. Uh February and March came around, but it seemed to be, if I'm not mistaken, that there was a a high demand still for um other hours that. She was willing to do, and it just turned out to be that she was here for more than the thirty hours a week that it originally intended to be.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's due to like um either somebody being out, being sick, and her having to cover or um. Um recently, um this was. I I requested that um to have the window open on Fridays, which we were gonna start July first. That um I would need her to be full-time um in order to even be able to stay open on Fridays. Um there's other things that staff does other than the window um that. You know, and and just the need for her to be be full-time for us to be able to cross-train. My staff can't take. Um days off um because they have to be paid with their specific to certain jobs payroll AP um. And then um billing permits or renewals or, you know, things like that, that she would help. Um do or be able to have me cross-train them in other areas so they can cover each other. Um but yeah, that's. That's the request um to have her full-time. And the reason for the additional um staff is the request to have the window open until five thirty. Um our staff would have to be here till six, and they have other things outside of um their normal hours now. Um the rate is in school, um Veronica has to pick up children. Isaiah's had um creatures at a church and teachers, so that's, those are things that they cannot accommodate to stay past um the four, four-thirty schedule that they're already on.
So is there something in the contract that states if an individual goes so many days past their regular time, it becomes part of their full-time?
I'm not certain of that, Eugene. I would have to look a little bit further to see if there is anything. My gut says no. Um she was already benefit-eligible.
No.
Um it seemed to be that there was just an extra ten hours that were regular time that could have been used, that were available, that she was offering. Uh not necessarily to keep her uh not from part-time to go into full-time, but not to have any overtime, which was the concern.
So how many people do we have that work the window?
We have two and a um and one that that um builds like covers.
Or when someone goes to lunch?
Yeah, well, they they alternate, so we're always open during lunch. Um it's more mainly in the evening if somebody has to um this, like the night of the schedule, somebody's leaving at three thirty or three, she covers until four thirty. Well, she's basically the board.
Because when we talked about the thirty hours. And opening the window for time, that was to help accommodate for those individuals who. Were already eight hours till that window stayed open longer. Now you're asking for another part-time person to help. Fill that void.
Right, the only, the the only part-time, the reason for the part-time person is to cover the hours. My staff can work and accommodate where we're open Monday through Friday right now that. Um they can accommodate as is to four o'clock. Um meaning they they leave around four thirty because they have to close the register. So not just closing the window doesn't keep them, they have to stay at at least another half hour. To close their registers, count their money, um and and just blow the day out. And then um so after four thirty, I don't have anybody to fill. To accommodate the hour to stay open to five thirty, which really they would be here until six because they need to close the day, they need to close the register and count.
I I think for me, um. Kind of going back to the, how many, this, I guess for me looking at the report, I was thinking, why weren't we flipping that position to full-time first? Um to help with those hours. Yeah, but actually have that on here first where we're flipping that and making full-time. Seeing how that works out and then adding the part-time versus, I feel like we're kind of doing this in reverse.
The only thing is because you guys want the hours to to be open longer. That's where the issue is. It's not necessarily the people that I have. I can accommodate up to four o'clock, having the window open to four o'clock. We can either open at eight o'clock if you'd like. Right now it's eight thirty to four, um Monday through Friday. We just started Monday through Friday and July first, so we needed. Actually, it's gonna start um this Friday because I didn't realize that we that we were already here. So um I've already told them that, you know. This was a, this was the requirement um to have Narita full-time is so that we can have the at least Monday through Friday open. Um till four, till four o'clock. Um but you guys are requesting the hours to be till four, till five thirty, which means my staff will have to stay stay till six and they can't do it. None of them can do that.
So I can't.
So that's why I'm asking for an additional person to fill that two hours of the evening.
So if she's gonna go full-time, why can't she come in at ten and work till?
She has a goal. She's already registered, but they they wasn't aware that this was gonna be a change in her hours. And so she's already made commitments and she can't change them.
So it sounds like she would have to go back to her part-time hours. Right, without the extra hours, and then this clerk part-time would fill in. Those additional, are you asking for her to be full-time added?
I'm asking her to be full-time because I need her to be full-time in order for us to do a proper cross-training and her being here when staff doesn't hear. So I already want her full-time anyway. The the fact of having the window open another hour. That I think we can, we have other avenues for payment, online phone, uh Q card or QR code, um. Dropbox, like those things that can accommodate that. I really don't need a part-time person in the evening. This was just the alternative if. We have to stay, oh, if you were absolutely no changes, that we had to stay open till five thirty.
Well, I think it's. I think that it is a need of this community to have somebody here later in the day. Um because we do have community members who just aren't tech savvy, don't have access to tech. And so it really is an access issue, right? So across the board, we want to make sure that all our community members. Can access our services, especially when it comes to payments, utilities. We don't want water shut off because of some sort of barrier. So. I think that the spirit, at least that I remember, in terms of why we want, not just that we arbitrarily want a five-thirty schedule, but there really is a need.
I might, I might add too that this position will be funded, you know, by through the enterprise, so it wouldn't hit the general fund and um. And I think partly a big percentage of the uh the Nettie's position is also funded by the enterprise, which has much healthier and it's not really gonna hit the general fund.
I think maybe it seems like we don't want to create a position to best um. Cover other schedules, um when we talk about fin- our finances. Yeah, and I just honestly, you know, to stay open that later, or, you know, to have a new person come in for just those two hours kind of creates also the risk because. Sometimes they'll be here by themselves. There's not always a guarantee that I'm gonna be here till six thirty with this person. So. Like that's, that's the only alternative is that I'm the other person there in the office um with this person um while they're working, like. There creates risk, the safe is open, you know, register is open, um receipts and 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 cash. It's just.
Except one person. Uh what on the, by themselves is not, is an issue.
Yeah. It may, it just creates, it just creates an extra layer layer of security that needs to happen.
You know, this may be a silly question, but why five thirty?
Well, that's, that's what you guys, yeah, you guys. Was that, that's what we had talked about before, about staying open because of, and the vehicles who were coming in. Right, that's the word. And they come in and they pay with cash. Because, you know, a lot of our community members, that's how they pay, and they're trying to go, and it's not. And then with the new system, you know, now it's charging you, if you pay with a credit card, it's charging almost ten dollars.
Hmm.
And then you can do, you could do the one where I spoke with Janice and I was explaining, you could do, if you have a checking account. You can go through the phone, it doesn't charge you an extra, you know, nothing, but a lot of our people in our communities don't really have checking, check checking accounts, so they pay cash.
We have, we have seniors in our, we have disabled individuals, I just don't, that's certainly not a question to that technology.
What is the latest that um your, uh, for me, stay open till four?
Four. But if you're saying.
With current staff, could we stay till five? Would that be possible? If reasonable to look at?
Not, not that I know of.
I just.
They say so, they actually think of four thirty, like that's their max because they have to close, right? So we just close the window at four.
I mean, I just, I myself just find it hard is, this is your job. You have to accommodate your job. Your things you do outside of work are things that you need to adjust to what your work schedule is.
I understand that, but we're also talking about adults who have children who can't change their whole lives to to meet this. So that's why I'm asking for an additional person.
And I have, I have four children that I've raised that are now all graduated from high school, and I know. How hard it is to do that, you know, to have to adjust, but when you become a parent, you have to figure out ways to make work and life outside altogether. It it it's hard.
And and that's their, that's their chores. If this is set and they can't do and and they're they're they're, they have to resign, like they will resign, they're not. They can't accommodate the schedule that they're proposing, so they will resign. I have to, you have to take that into consideration. I don't want to lose my team. But I, they and they they've been here for a really long time, you know.
I understand.
We, I have very tenor employees that have knowledge that, right, are, it's not duplicated right now.
No, no, go ahead.
B S B, when staff had to bring the attention to the finance. Department, this update in news of trying to remedy. Opening the finance window from nine thirty to five thirty. The morale, from what I heard, I wasn't there, instantaneously went from positive to negative.
And it's because it's a change. Correct. People, people at times they comfortable and they're saying they don't like change. I see it where I work. It's difficult for people, but it's things that have to be done. And it's not, it's not, it's not a thing towards them that they're not, it's just. We have to provide a service for our community and our community is asking to be able to have this and. At times, we as individuals have to just suck that up and be like, okay, I gotta figure something out.
Right, you know, I'm not saying. The thing for us was to have a part-time person working two hours in the evening to accommodate those few hours. The solution for us was to have a part-time person working two hours in the evening to accommodate those few hours. That we would have to have a window open.
But you just said though is. If there's a safety issue where you may not be here till six o'clock at night, there's still gonna be an individual by themselves. If the other team members can't adjust their schedule to have two people here with each other.
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah, that's the difference that we have is that we'll have a new person in the office by themselves for two, two to three hours.
Can I just, um, could we, I'm throwing a thought here. Could we do a trial? A one-month trial, come up with a schedule that you think could work, just to see what kind of foot traffic we get.
Are you asking me or the finance?
I'm asking if that's even something that we could look at, you both talk to staff, you you understand that there is there, this isn't a positive thing, I understand that. Could we do that and then come back and say, you know what, we did this for a month and we got two people that came in?
That's a good point.
That's the thing, I just don't have anybody to say that thing.
Well, we would ask that staff try it. That maybe it could be on a rotation basis, I understand that, trust me, I I understand, this is, I got my hats to you, because being in this position is very difficult. Because your staff is very, has has very big um, obligations at home and personal lives. I completely understand where you're coming from and to fight for your staff, I respect you very much for doing that. That being said, could we come to some sort of. Agreement to try something to see if this is really needed or not? Because I would also hate to go through all the efforts of doing this onboarding and hiring. And then we get someone and they're here by themselves, we're running a risk, as you mentioned, which I take very seriously, for minimal foot traffic. Is that something that we, you think they would at least be reasonable to think about? And do it equitably for all of them so that no one person is being burdened or negatively impacted for a long period of time?
I see Todd shaking this idea up and down, yes, I'm not sure if that was something that was previously discussed, Janice, before.
No.
Having this as the 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 least happened existence, to have another person be hired.
They're aware of what the hours are and cannot accommodate.
So if we came back from this open session, talking about that, I would anticipate refusal.
What if you, what if you um, just had a temp come in and then do it, or is that? No, you, no, I mean, just somebody to come in and then do a count and see what kind of level of activity.
So it was just a four thirty, I mean, we don't have to maybe see five thirty, if we just did four thirty.
Or even till five, yeah, because I give them that still that thirty minutes to cover that.
True.
I don't, you know, um, what's the, what's the total amount, you you've got the hourly rate, is there a total that we're looking at in terms of this, your total financial package? Is that, because it's enterprise, I don't see that as a, as a big deal, we're discovering. And I, and I, and there's, the middle ground is, first of all, with the councilman uh. Is saying, is saying that when you come to a job, the job is your job. And when you can't accommodate additional, somebody has to go to school or to childcare, that happens in every in, every environment.
Everybody gets it back.
And so I think from now on, people need to understand when they come in that there's, this is your job. And I think that we, we're getting hammered because where the people are telling us, you're closed, you're closed, you're closed. And so I think the medium, the happy ground is to let people know in the future that you you're coming to work and here's your, here's your schedule. We understand, you know, I worked in a healthcare environment with mainly ninety-nine percent female with kids and it's tough. Uh, so we, we understand that, so uh, my thing is let's move with this request. Because it's not gonna cost us financially, I think it'll benefit us in terms of what the public sees in services, so. Uh, you know, the, doing it, uh, because you're coming back next, the next council looking for a full-time person. And I think, I know you're correct, that should have been what we're looking at now. I think you're trying to, it seemed that there's a Band-Aid approach, let's, let's do what the council wants. To have somebody there and add a, you know, temporary person, not temporary, but a part-time. As opposed to what's really, what's really needed.
If I can comment too, um. Megan's idea is great, but I I believe we would need more than one month to gather data or analytics and see what what power going with that. I think it'd be minimal, probably three to six months and then figure out what we stand for there because I'm. I mean, same thing with our offices, we're asking them to do a lot of different shifts and and they're doing it. So I mean, it's just, I I understand nobody wants to to budge, but that comes with the whole employment, you know?
I I understand, I I did, I did let them know that if that was something that the council wants and like they, they've already told me that if they can't. They understand that you have this position what you guys want, but they themselves cannot accommodate these hours, that they, that we, we wouldn't have funded this person. And if that's what, and the happening, that's what, and the happening, that's, I'm letting you know that there are a way, they are aware of the hours that are requested, um.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that, everyone has to make those decisions, I, there's no judgment in that statement at all, I completely understand.
What, what?
Um, I was hearing that there was some possible discussion previously before even Janice's in my tenure of a possible look into cost of a kiosk. Have we looked into that again? And is that something that we could at least?
Yeah.
So, I mean, essentially the thirty hour that's right there now is getting. Full-time healthcare benefits, you'd be looking at an additional ten hours a week, forty hours a month, times twelve is. So times that hourly and then um, so that would be your costs and probably be covered under enterprise and then the um. Two to three hours a night would be under enterprise as well, so that's where your cost would be, no benefits on that part.
So you you're saying with the going from thirty to forty, is that would actually cover all the time slots that we need covered?
No, no, she's, plus the part-time.
And then you said two to three hours a night, that's only fifteen hours a week?
Or, yeah, up to that nineteen would be, that would be your math in terms of what is the hourly on that?
Okay.
On that part timer.
Are you asking for a range?
Yeah, yeah, whatever the, general, yeah.
It's uh, nineteen five.
Thank you.
So if you did the math, that's kind of, you know, essentially what you're.
You know, I I don't think the issue is.
Yeah, right.
It's sorry, because it's an enterprise thing.
Right.
There's more money than, there's there's money there. It's a matter of, to me, it's a matter of public service, we gotta get somebody, we gotta get somebody there. And you know, it has some balance with people, what people want in terms of what they need in terms of childcare, other extracurricular activities, but. My, my feeling is that if there's a job, the news year hour, this is what you're gonna do. And I think it's, and I, and I appreciate people saying that that if they're not gonna like it, then they may walk out, that's, that's really up to them.
Yeah.
But it's uh.
They're they're aware.
Yeah.
I also wanna be really conscious that we're talking about this finance clerk being by themselves to cover these hours, but who's covering them in their absence? So there's still, even though you fill this position, there still needs to be an understanding that someone has to back them up. So if, are we just gonna close the window if that person's sick or not able to come in, I mean, that will need to be incorporated into that scheduling of that person, is that? Someone else will need to back, yeah.
Right, you just can't, this, when it's not there.
Yeah, so even if we do that and if somebody doesn't budge, that's gonna be an issue too.
I'll present an update uh, on the next meeting, but, because they're not aware of what, you know. To do a trial run, you know, or. If that, like I said, if they just choose at that time, that this just is, they just can't do this, that they are looking for other employment, that these are their options. Um, they're not really presented with, with us going forward and and doing the 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 five thirty. So I will present it, I will let them be aware that this is not, this is uh. This is something that is being um, uh, searched by council to to have the window open till five thirty. Um, and if we can try to figure out a way to accommodate this five, uh, five thirty shift. Um, and then if we can trial run.
Well, I think the trial run was just an idea, I think if we're approving today, we're approving that person, I'm just saying. What I'm hearing is this intention of this person is to do that evening shift and so my concern then would be, okay, so. If your staff is saying, well, we don't wanna budge, we cannot stay, you know that. What are we building in in terms of scheduling, the scheduling when this person is not available? Because they inevitably will have something, you know, they themselves are gonna have their own lives, so relying on one person part-time. To be the go-to at night by themselves, I don't know if that's, that's gonna be a long-term approach once.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that wasn't, that's not my ideal, um, solution. Um, it's just the only way that I could still have the team that I have and have the window open for what you guys think.
So I would like to see if this were to move forward that, that the message be that this is an integrated part of that team. But not a standalone team on their own. Because that, that is something that's different, right, okay, well, we hired this person to cover that and your staff's thinking, well, it's their job to cover that. Well, no, this is in addition to support this team to accommodate this because it is a need of the community, not a personal will of the council. And so that's where I wanna make sure I just really clear about.
Based on business need, yeah, yeah, they're 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 aware of that direction, and that this is the business need of the community and it's not. Um, but I guess I said, they have their own personally, they have to be the ones to make the judgment on how, if this is gonna work for them or not.
Absolutely understandable, absolutely understandable.
So what, you said you have. Three people that are to work the window, correct? So what time do they start?
Um, I think it's is.
I don't know, I'm supposed to.
Seven to four thirty. He takes a lunch, and Narita lunch from seven to three thirty. Um, with no lunch, um, and then. This was the first I I even knew, like I don't even, yeah, yeah, I I've already, I've already adjusted, I've already adjusted the Friday of this. Cause we need that window, we need that coverage.
Because I'm just trying to, why are they starting at seven?
Because they have a nine eighty.
No, no. Why, why are they starting at seven?
Schedule that later.
Why don't, why aren't they coming in that?
Just so that they can work an eight-hour shift or, you know, make a nine eighty without, um.
This goes back to the initial.
Yeah, where they can't stay past a certain time.
We, we can't schedule them, they personally cannot.
Yes.
Because they have, they, yes, they personally cannot have this.
Personally.
Narita can't stay till four thirty, we've already, we've already talked about this, because this was. Something I just learned and um, of what her, her official schedule was, um, but the. The problem is after that point is that she's already committed to school and she's not going to draw.
Which is reasonable, I don't think anybody wants to be.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's just things that are are after hours that they can't accommodate and if. If I have, like I said, this is their choice to whether or not they can stay in this position or not.
You know, it's, it's, it's almost like putting a Band-Aid on this thing, if we, if if we have, we're saying eight thirty or whatever time, I don't know, when do they start? When's the, they said it's because of the nine eighty, so is the nine eighty a problem?
Yeah, that's the problem.
A big problem.
I don't, I don't think so, the only, no, because they're, they're still working an eight-hour shift except on a Friday.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
The Friday though, they can, they can come in at, from eight to four thirty, that's. That's one of the changes that I had asked them, but they can't stay past four thirty is what I'm at, is what I'm saying. So would you have any?
With a nine eighty?
No, not because of the nine eighty. If they've worked from.
Eight to five, what happens?
They'll, they would work from seven, either seven or seven thirty to five to four.
Five thirty.
I, I do, I do think that. Nine eighties can be difficult. For clerical staff when you're trying to do a Monday through Friday. Open hours availability, because they work a longer day and shorter day on Friday and then every other week they have that day off. And then you're limited on staff, your numbers aren't significant, so you're trying to shuffle that schedule, it it is a challenge. I've, I've had staff on a nine eighty schedule, it is a challenge. Um, I understand there's two issues here though, which is, one is your staff is unable to work those hours for whatever reason, we've already established that. That doesn't mean that our business model cannot become. A Monday through Friday to five, it just means that this time with our staff, that is our challenge, is that correct? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
It's uh, it sounds to me like we need to, we need to analyze this again instead of putting a Band-Aid on it, so. If nine eighty, I believe you need another staff person, full-time staffers.
Hundred percent.
So that's, that's covered, whatever the hours are, but then there's this, this uh, you know, this requirement there for leave early, which uh. You almost need uh, two people covered.
So what, what time does the, the doors open for, and then do we go and start the business day?
The.
When they.
Eight thirty to four.
Eight thirty to four. And they started seven?
Just started Friday, okay.
That's just concerned, that just started.
Is there a uh, start of time that's, that's needed for that? Prior to the thirty?
We just asked like a thirty-minute window before their, their shift start, so if you want the window to be open at seven thirty, I can have that. They're, they're able to stay, they are able to come in because they come in at that time.
Right.
If you want the window open an hour earlier, we can do that and they close the window at four.
Well, that's, that's gonna keep it open, maybe we can keep it open later, not thirty.
Thinking about who is going to these windows and what time are they working, what time are they getting out of school, who's also working family, what time do they get out of school, what time are they gonna be there?
Commuters, they're driving back from somewhere.
Yes, I think everyone is experiencing a lot of challenges, but I don't know if they're gonna wanna stay off or.
We hold up on this, yeah.
You could, you could table it, you could table it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, like I mentioned, I believe that we need a staff, a full-time staff person.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for clarification, can I ask for clarification, you mean the. Make the part-time finance clerk full-time or another full-time position on top of that?
Minimally, decrease that to three hours.
But you said, okay, so you're, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I was, I wasn't sure if you meant just make the third clerk. Full-time from the part-time benefits eligible position that, that she's currently in. You would, you would consider at least that you think there may be need for like a fourth full-time?
No, again, the middle is to try to accommodate.
No, no, I understand, I I just wanted a big clarification for staff's benefit on what you were saying, so thank you.
We need the coverage.
So, that's the bottom line, we need the coverage, I don't, I don't work that coverage, does it mean that we need a person to have additionally?
So you, so you're looking at the thirty to forty, move to thirty to the forty and then another full-time?
Yeah.
Okay, just, yeah.
If it's covered, if it's, we have the resources by the enterprise funds that are there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, we can come back with that, yeah.
Now, what happens now on Friday, what are, what are we doing now?
Well, yeah, right, Narita would be, would be staying the full-time um, to cover her, like I need, I need, I need her to be full-time for us to stay open on Friday.
Now, do you need our action or can that, can that happen now?
Can that happen, I don't.
That has to come back in the future. But you would continue doing whatever you're currently doing in terms of your authorizing additional hours or whatever. It's just not an official change of that position, you're gonna bring that to the next meeting, correct? Yes. So it sounds like we're getting that first at the next meeting.
So I'll table it.
And we're tabling.
We need a motion to table?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Continue. You have your, you have your direction, I understand what you're asking us to do.
All right. Now that we saw that.
So.
Future agenda items. We're, we're, we met the. An option is, this recreation group met uh, yesterday at Zoom. That's uh, what's it called?
Rural.
Rural community development, whatever it's uh. And what, and all of it, what was, what we were gonna do. And basically, uh, if you look at the general plan, it encompasses a lot of these things they have questions about. And I think as soon as we're talking about having the state of the city, where all the departments come and talk, this is what's going on. Uh, what's happening outside, just like Caltrans, they wanna put thirty-one million dollars on one sixty-six in here, so. People need other, people need to hear what's going on. So what I'm saying is that we need to really put in concrete when we're gonna do the state of the city. And then have the parameters, and we're meeting tomorrow to talk about, let's look at the parameters in terms of what that, that Jenny's gonna look like.
Yeah, we got past the, the audit and then the budget and then that'll drive.
All reported, supportive items.
And then each department head will um, you know, give some kind of a presentation as to what.
Yeah, so I would look at August.
August?
Yeah, the latter part of August.
Would you like that in a separate, um, like its own workshop kind of a thing, or would you like it as part of the?
It, it would, if, if we concentrate on that. Uh, let's do Thursday after the playoffs.
Do you not be in a bad mood though?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll talk to you more at contact.
Is there funding for translation services?
My cop, I think, yes, yeah, I'm sorry. My cop from Santa Maria mentioned that, um, so if you ever wanted to reach to a resident that's with respect, go through the region for them and you can send them the text message alerts. Um, and letting them know of any services that we'll be providing, like we have a town hall, we have a city town meeting. Any notifications they have that they will, a lot of residents that go to my cop.
Thank you.
And there is one next Wednesday. That's the county, it's here at five.
The nineteenth, that's six.
Yeah, that's the nineteenth, that's the county, uh, FEMA, all an update on the levy, on the
The dooms.
Instructions on the dooms.
Yeah.
And it'll be held in the outer time.
Yes.
It's gonna be a big one.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
There's a translation that's gonna happen.
Well, we, I, you, you don't, we don't have that technology in there now, but, yeah.
But we'll, we will have translation.
What about, um, fee schedule? Do we have any update? Cause I gotta be coming up.
Yeah, so I was gonna add that to future demo items for, um, Tuesday, August eighth. And then also the joint use agreement for, um, the city with the school district.
Is that also gonna be on the eighth?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you Hannah.
Any more additions to the?
There's some L C W contract extension, um, J. So we'll have to extend that and we don't use it that much, but it's just good to have.
Right.
And then also I think it's a retro on the, um, cell tower, um, that, uh, Phil, uh, mentioned that we bring that forward. That's BDK, I think it is.
Uh, yes, I, I didn't mention it, but that, that's correct.
And then also, um, um, I talked to Hannah today and we're, we're discussing, discussion about a wreck in Parks Commission abandonment issue that both come forward with the recommendation of the council to say, you know, the, we have advertised for a, a person that has not even attended any of the meetings.
Well, there's, there's, uh, actually my step on the, especially if you miss three.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, we need, want to consider developing some policies for council and for uh, the commission that you can approve and, and just so that these kinds of things come up is there's no guidance when something like that happens.
Well, there, there is, but that's probably a, uh.
Well, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe we could, I just wanted to try to dig it up, but, uh, I'm unaware of any policies.
Right. Anything else that?
There's gonna be a new ordinance, a pre-ordinance that you have one year of one schedule?
Uh, well, I, you know, it's funny, I, I actually can answer that. I was talking to Shannon, I go, you get that done before you leave in two days? Um, and she said, well, she was working on it, um, we may have some movement on that, but, um, were you asking for it to be moved forward or taken off?
Well, I'd like to see, cause there are some trees in areas that are kind of, over, not ours specific. Say I've seen the pre-service guys cleaning up down by the street, but there's areas of residential who have trees that are going over their fence into
Yeah.
areas and they're not, and it's one of those where it might be something we wanna
Good idea.
look at to say like, hey.
That's a law enforcement issue. I'm just kidding. It is, uh, it would be a code compliance issue once we had an ordinance, so.
Right.
And, and this, this is infinite, you know? Then, you know, cause I know, you know, if it goes over my yard, I can.
Okay, well, I think, I think, um, uh, Shannon left that project in, in a state of not completion, but not.
So our new public works individual.
Yes, I will, uh, I will speak with them about that and, and, uh, I'm gonna say her name wrong, I hate it. They.
Dana.
Oh, Dana, yeah. She's pretty sharp, uh, we'll probably jump on that, so. Yeah, I, I'm sorry if I keep bugging, but I know the chief every periodically brings this up, the food truck and special event ordinance. Now that Larry's tapering off in terms of the general plan and the housing element, is that something you'd like to see advanced? The, the food and, the food truck and special events ordinance, the chief keeps bringing it up now and then, and I'm like, I feel kinda guilty.
Especially as, you know, post-COVID, there's more events we wanna have. And other entities have started small businesses. I think it'd be a really good time to find that on the books, just so that everyone is on the same page.
I'd like to sit down, find out this, which is really, so.
Maybe we have food check night.
Okay, yeah, announce this. Jamie, do you have anything? Oh, Christina, I know you have, but you were, what about the, Stephanie's thing?
I wrote a really great report.
Kitchen side.
And this brief, if you have to.
I've had a long week and so I had a lot of meetings, but
Okay.
The G-PAC, the G-PAC had a wonderful, um, event at the Buddhist church. They had the author, um, remember, um, Janice, and she was there to talk about George Aratani. Um, and when she was speaking in regards to my Japanese community members, it kind of just reminded me of how, um, how I kind of, uh, remind myself how I worked so hard, um, with my, uh, community members or our family, um, just those, um, values that they were mentioning of George and his friends. It really resonated with myself and growing up in Wobukui, so I thought it was, um, really important to share about our Japanese community members, um. Yeah, so I'm gonna add anything to it.
Um, they're, they're from, uh, there's a larger, uh, Japanese organization in there, Gara, uh, Southern California.
Thousand.
And there was.
Thousand Oaks.
Thousand Oaks. And they came up via van, uh, their medical Buddhist church. And then from there, there's a little spiel on, uh, the, the bottom line is that they, the Japanese are the ones that built the Royal Theater. And another one like that. So that's why they came down to actually look at that Royal Theater. And then, uh, Janice writes books on, uh, in the, the group Guadalupe. And, and the Japanese and the Setsu Artani was the person that built a baseball field many, many years ago and took a, uh, Guadalupe, Guadalupe men to Japan to play softball, uh, against Japanese. And, uh, there's a strong Buddhist, uh, uh, softball team that was here too. So there's a lot of history that people don't, don't know about. So there, there's a book and we'll have to get that posted to where you can actually examine about Guadalupe and about the Japanese and their their influence there in the community. There, uh, they mentioned that, and also there was Tom Bradbury that talked about the Royal Theater and, and what's happened, how, how money was secured by the Economic Development Association of the Feds for five million for the building. And then the historical aspect of that, and then the Performing Arts Center, another five million dollars from the state, uh, Arts, Arts.
California Arts Council.
California Arts Council. So that, then they, we toured, uh, the theater, um, there's, there's actually a video on Artani, George Artani. If Mikasa, uh, there were, then he found that.
Kenwood's.
Kenwood, Kenwood.
Yeah.
Um, the systems that he, you know, found with that, yeah. Anyway, they went to, uh, Royal Theater, then, um, Chief was there, Christina was there, Todd was there. I, I was there, um, we had a bento, who knows what bento is?
It was good.
I was like, is this?
I really like that.
And then I looked it up and it was great, great food.
Yeah, it was.
And it served cold, you have to eat it cold, but it was, but it, it was good. Then they went to, they actually walked, some of them walked to Los Atalanes and Brian was there. And he took them over to the, his home there in the, the two-story house. And they toured the, they toured the Capodanno home where Harry and met, talked with Harry. And so that was, that was pretty cool, so. Yeah, so they're gonna, they, they thanked us, they thanked the city, thanked everybody that was involved with it. So that was a good, a good turnout. There was, um, this group, uh, again, the recreation group. Uh, we met and there's some that, though, I don't know if they, they do it, have it online, yeah, so.
And the next one, um, is gonna be the thirty-first of July.
Thirty-first of this, this month, so. There's, uh, maybe it's, I have another tomorrow. Um, every, every month, the S P K has a North County and a South County meeting. And the North County is all the North County representatives, uh, from North County, La Po, ourselves. Uh, I don't know, Salt Lake's included in that, but yeah, it is because they're meeting in Salt Lake. And Sanrio, so we're meeting tomorrow and the big ticket item is, is, uh, we'll be meeting with Caltrans and different players to, uh, figure out how to fund the development of, um, of, uh, one sixty-six and Highway One. And there's two options. One is to just do the railroad track site. During the signalization and, and, uh, that's about, I don't know how many minutes of this. The other option, which does, that does not include Pasareta.
Right, their, their contribution.
Abyssal Street. And so the option that we're gonna talk about tomorrow was doing the whole gamut, uh, the whole project is gonna be about thirty-one million dollars, um, what's right now on the table. It's hopefully, it's reduced, it's twelve million dollars required from Pasareta. And so when you're talking about those bridges that have to go over the railroad tracks, each one costs six million. So when you have to buy, you have to buy two bridges and
And then that.
And then that, and then underground in the PG and E six, the power, because the commercials wanna want, will want underground. Not power on the, on the, on the power pole. So tomorrow we meet at ten o'clock to actually go over options. Option one is the, the full, only the railroad side and option two is the whole gamut. And we'll push for the whole gamut, cause we need, we need that Abyssal Street, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, area. In meeting with Caltrans, they're very, Caltrans is basically heading this whole process. Railroad, Southern Pacific says, we don't wanna deal with all these little guys, uh, which is us and the county and, uh, the Caltrans said, we'll handle it. Cause they're, they're connecting with, uh, with the railroad, uh, and they're, they're, they're the lead on the soul things.
It's kind of, it's called a consolidated grant?
Yeah, consolidated grant, uh, and again, we, we, we submit, we, we approve three minutes.
Yes, so that measure, measure A.
Measure A money. So it's gonna be about a thirty-one million dollar project, so you'll be seeing more of that, so. That's all I have. Great, Governor?
Nothing. Um, no. Except we're gonna get a warm-up.
I know, get a warm-up.
Seventy-four is pretty warm.